Thank you. I believe Treasurer Slavens has a motion to appoint a temporary president pro tem.
Yes, Mr. Clerk, I move in the absence of the supervisor, the board appoint Steven Snyderman as president pro tem.
Motion has been moved and supported. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Steven Snyderman will be president pro tem for the meeting.
Well, in lieu of moving over right now, I think I'll just call for a motion to go into closed session for pending litigation.
Support.
Motion first.
Oh, sorry.
Is there a second? And I think we need a roll call vote.
Yes. Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Graham Hudek? Seagrist, yes. Slavens?
Yes.
Snyderman?
Yes.
Ann Williams is absent.
We are in closed session. All right.
Okay, in case.
I'm amending the minutes.
Yep. So we have to do a motion to come out of.
Correct.
She's still talking to them.
It's gonna be a quick meeting.
Yes, I was happy about that.
Don't get on the sidewalk.
Oh, damn. Should we have a discussion on sidewalks, John?
I authorized it. You're gonna enter the motion to spend the remaining contingency for 2019 on sidewalk gap closures.
Perfect. Do you want to say what you amended in here when we bring it up?
No. I'll say there's a copy in the back.
Okay. That's fine.
I just, the motion was repeated twice.
Oh, okay.
That's all. It was a copy and paste error.
Gotcha.
And page five and six. I will say that, page five and six, if that makes sense.
I just saw this sitting here. This is... This is the minutes? This is the last, the June 25th meeting, when we had 18. I'm like, wait, did I not see the second page? Oh, I don't think we have to.
Okay, do you want to add that as G2?
Sure.
Proceed, direct the attorney.
Do you have a pen? I actually didn't. Let me put it on my computer. G2.
So you want me to make...
What should we title it?
Just G2.
G2, but the, when I read the title motion.
No, so what I'll do is...
A motion from...
We can just say item G2, and then I can just jump in. I'm like, Mr. White, why I call you now? President Pro Tem.
President Pro Tem.
President Pro Tem.
Get my computer going here. All right, we'll get started here. For those who are new, I've been named President Pro Tem for this meeting. Sort of a tryout, and we are coming out of closed session, so we need a motion to return from closed session.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are in our regular session. A motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented with the amendment of adding item G2 to proceed, to authorize legal counsel to proceed as directed in the matter of Kang versus Canton as discussed in closed session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the amended agenda?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on. Approval of minutes, we have one set of minutes from June 25th, and we have been sent a amended set of minutes from our packet, and there's an amended set in the back. So do we have a motion to approve that amended set of minutes?
Mr. Supervisor, I move, Mr. President Pro Tem, it's a habit, I move to approve the minutes as amended with pages five and pages six in back.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we're at the point where we have citizens' non-agenda, non-agenda items and comments, public comment for those. If anyone's here to comment on something that's not on our agenda, and there's not much on it, so there may be, please come to the microphone, come to the podium. Good evening, George, can you state your name and address?
Sure. My name is George Belvich, 44526 Claire Boulevard, Plymouth Township. In Michigan, there's still so much work to be done to protect the rights of LGBTQ persons. All you need to know is that in 1973, the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act does not include protections for LGBTQ persons, citizens of Michigan. Time after time, that amendment has been voted, amendments have been voted down or not even brought to the House floor, Senate floor of our Capitol. It's because of this inaction, communities like Canton have passed their own human rights ordinance, and why pride events, like the one we had here in Canton on June 23rd at the Village Theater, are so very important for LGBTQ citizens of Canton and Michigan. So I wanted to publicly thank the Canton trustees for supporting that very first Canton Pride Festival. We had a lot of fun. It was pretty well attended. You always want more people for a good event, but we had a great time. We had families there, we had parents with children there, and it went really, really well. We had a local business participate, volunteered to come and participate and be there with us. A special thanks goes to Joe Kavoryak, the Village Theater manager. Without Joe, we certainly wouldn't have had that event there. Joe reached out to me some time ago about it, and then we just began the process of planning it. So my thanks to Joe and the work he did to make this event successful. Not only Joe, but all of the people that worked with Joe, the assistant managers, and in particular, the tech crew that works at the Village Theater. There, there's some good people there, and they know their stuff. And we were kind of a small potatoes operation, but they treated us like we were, you know, living in the high-rent district. So it was, it was really, really nice. And of course, one of the best things was, the bartender made a great gin and tonic. So that was good, too. With your support, with Canton, Canton community's support, we raised money for the Ruth Ellis Center, which is a location in Highland Park for transgender youth in Detroit and southeast Michigan. We raised money for In The Band Music Appreciation Studio. That's a nonprofit that's located in Plymouth. They provided all of our music for free. That's a great organization that helps young musicians learn their craft and, and learn how to be good entertainers. They were very, very excited to be performing on that big stage with the lights and the great sound. So I said to them at the end, I said, how did it go? Did you, you know, did you feel okay about it? Yeah, can we come back next year? So it was all good. And we also donated money to the Gender Straight Alliance at the park, Plymouth Canton Educational Park. They do good work with the students at the park, and so we were glad to help them. So it's through these stories that we make connections with people and circumstances. And so we told a pretty good story two weeks ago at the Village Theater in Canton, and I'm so glad that you were a part of it and that you welcomed us to the community to have this first event. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvich. I'm glad that Canton was able to participate along with so many other communities and cities around the world in June. Any other public comment on a non-agenda item? Hearing none, we'll ask the treasurer to make a motion to pay the bills.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second?
Or...
Second, and any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We've paid the bills. All right, the consent calendar has four items that the, that the clerk will read in one motion.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move that the board adopt the consent or approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of the municipal credit agreement with Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, SMART. Consider, item C2, consider second reading and adoption of an amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinance as establishing airport-related businesses as a special land use in the LI Light Industrial District and establishing site development standards for said use. Item C3, consider reappointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals of Mr., let's see here, James Seaseck and Ms. Vicki Welty. And item C4, a resolution affirming approval of the Senior Alliance 2020 through 2022 multi-year plan for aging services.
Is there a second?
Second.
No discussion on the consent calendar? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's passed. Moving on to the general calendar, we have two items. The first is, give me a second, consider approving payment. Item G1, consider approving payment for the service of an internal promotional process.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I move to approve the payment of $12,200 to Personnel Assessment Systems Incorporated for the development and execution of a police lieutenant promotional process.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments on this? Deputy Chief, is there any comments on this, on this process?
No, sir. It was very successful. We got some very good candidates that did a very good job.
Okay, what was the, what, what did the program do for us in getting those?
So the program created an eligibility list for our lieutenants, a position within the police department. We had one open position, and we anticipate having two open positions within the next year, and it'll fill all three of those positions.
Questions? Comments? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? And our last item, item G2, is from, a motion from our closed session.
President Pro Tem, I move that the board direct corporation counsel or legal to, the attorney to proceed as directed in the matter of Kang versus Canton.
Thanks, John. Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that's our agenda. I think I set a record. We'll have to let Pat know. So any administrators have any comments or questions? Any board? Oh, okay, that's true. Go ahead. Yeah. Is there any other public comment? Okay, now you can go ahead.
Okay. I just want to remind people, the summer taxes went out July 1, and my office is open on Tuesdays till 6:00 PM, the months of July and August. I just want to let everybody know, we have a pilot program going, so on Tuesdays, we are open from 8:30 to 6:00 PM. Yes, in the focus already and on the website, but I thought I'd announce it here as well.
And to our new municipal services director, welcome. We didn't have a lot for you to do in this meeting, but we're easing you into it, so it's good to see you.
We have the Thursday night's concert starting this week, so that's ongoing.
Yep, those are always fun.
They are fun, so, and also, the women won the U.S. Cup. I'm sorry, I just can't...
Yeah, it was exciting to watch. Anything else I missed? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, in the coming weeks, for those watching at home and those in the audience, keep an eye out on your mailbox, in your mailbox if you're not currently on the permanent absentee list and you're interested in becoming, joining that, because we are mailing out to, I believe, 65,000 individuals in Canton Township an application to join the permanent absentee list. If you'll remember, in November, voters passed Proposal 3, which eliminated the need for a reason to vote absentee. So now anybody is qualified to vote by mail if they so choose. They don't even have to be absent. So we are offering the opportunity for anybody to join that list, and it's actually nice because you'll get an application every time there's an election. It's almost a built-in reminder, hey, there could be an election. Now, a May election can't sneak past you, an August election can't sneak past you. If you're on vacation, you'll get that application about 45 days prior to the election, and it'll let you know, hey, I gotta vote pretty soon, and I can vote from home, why not? So it's a great opportunity. If you look for that, just fill that out. You can drop it back off or mail it back into my office. That'd be fantastic.
Parker, are you also going to, are you looking at training classes also for helping? Are you looking more towards the election, for getting election helpers?
Oh, yeah. So, well, we don't know if we're gonna have a November election yet. The deadline hasn't come to pass. So every election cycle, we do training for election inspectors. So, yeah, we would have a whole host of training. We're gonna need more individuals, because there's three elections in 2020. Even if we get by this year without an election, we'll still have three in 2020. There's the presidential preference primary in March, when everyone votes. I think there's about 17,000 Democrats running for president right now, but that'll be when that is. And then there's an August election as well, and then there'll be the November election for president.
So for the primary, would you start training before that, before the March primary? When, when would you start training people for that, if you need help?
Yeah, they're on January.
On January?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So probably be a big, a big recruitment push towards the end of the year, towards the end of the year. I might put something funny or quippy in the focus, like, you know, while you watch the debates, you know? Get involved, I don't know. I'll think, I'll work on it. I got some time. Yeah.
Anything else? Did I miss anything? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.